I'm in now. Tape gonna get tipped over somewhere. All right, I think it's five o'clock, time to start our study session. Summer, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Patterson?
Here.
Commissioner Norwood?
Here.
Commissioner Baker?
Here.
Commissioner Roberts?
Here.
Commissioner Solis? Commissioner Orr? And Mayor Mason?
Here. Okay, at Commissioner's request, discuss any item of concern on the regular session agenda. Have anything they want to talk about ahead of time? Okay. Item three point one, update on the Stride Bank Center from O V G three sixty. Jeff, that'd be you, I think.
Hey, good evening, everybody. How's everybody doing? I'm just gonna give you a quick update for basically the first quarter of F Y twenty-five and go through some things we got going on. First thing we've got is we're working on our naming rights with Stride Bank. The present contract expires on the thirtieth of June of twenty-six. We've met with Stride Bank officials in October and they're on board with us. We've sent the proposal and we're currently negotiating an extension or a renewal of three years and then likely a three-year option at the end of that. Pretty much stay in status quo, but we're gonna try to do some new things for them. We're gonna work on some branding with their credit card perks for existing Stride Bank customers where they, you know, we set up a fast lane to get them in the building quicker for events and then early pre-sale ticket access for the folks with those Stride Bank cards. And then some community involvement, some charity stuff where at the, you know, where you go to McDonald's or something like that. They want you to round up for McDonald House or whatever, so we might do some of that. A scholarship program, an Arena Cares initiative that we, you know, whether we work with United Way or someone like that to give some money there as well. Talking about a concert series with them and an anniversary show for those folks. And then, you know, a local battle of the bands. We had meetings between the city folks and Stride Bank and that was one of the things that come up is having more local band-type events. So we're, we're gonna work on those things with them. Projects we've got going on, in the corner of Gharriat and Grand, we've got the new marquee. It's actually installed and sitting there waiting for power. So as of the nineteenth, we'll have power to that new, pretty new board and we'll be able to get information out to the public there at that corner. The internal video screens will be installed the first two weeks of January. They should be in place just in time for, I think it's Skortel or Skelter, one of the two, the first basketball tournament in the building in January. So we're excited about that.
December nineteenth, do you mean this week or do you mean the whole year?
No, I'm sorry, it says twenty twenty-five.
Next week. Okay, very good.
Thank you. I thought I corrected that. And then we're working on something really cool for our plaza. We've got the, what's gonna be the Star Lumber Pavilion. Star Lumber has donated a large amount of money in materials to create a pavilion. There was a blank spot out in the middle of that plaza area that just looked real kind of ugh. And this thing is made out of real nice cedar, have a metal roof and it'll be something that, it'll be a very nice, really pretty weddings venue type place. We can do, we've got an event that we're gonna do in May, that's a music event. It'll be a great stage for those type of things. If you, if you haven't had a chance to see it, it's the city folks and C D S A has really done a lot of work to help us build this and it's gonna be a great addition to our venue. So we're, I'm excited to see that come to completion. Some of the event highlights so far this fiscal year, we had Jeff Dunham in the building. We hurt near sold it out, I was really hoping. We made about twenty-seven thousand dollars on that show. That was actual money in our pockets. Had a great economic impact, about forty thousand dollars and then the taxes of thirteen sixty-nine. Maybe basketball did real well for us as it always does and a couple of great conferences. One that Aaron brought to us that did real well, the O M C T F O A Conference. My goodness, so it made some good money for us. So these first, first few months, you know, one point five million dollars in economic impact and seventy-four, almost seventy-five thousand dollars in local tax impact on the, for the city. So, you know, obviously we want to make more on these and hopefully we will and I'd love to see a lot more, but we're gonna keep adding more and more events as we can get them.
Jeff, can I stop you right there?
You can.
Of those eight that you made money on, how does that look on all the other? Did we make money on everything?
We haven't, most of our events, we haven't had a concert to lose money on. I hate to say it that way, but you know, we've, the only thing, and we'll talk when we get here with this last slide where it talks about the final numbers, I'll talk about why we're seeing a deficit currently and explain, try to explain that a little bit. But everything, you know, we've done so far has made money. Our, you know, our banquets, the basketball tournaments and those things tend to make money. Jeff Dunham made us money. I guess that was a big concert type thing, so it made us money. So we haven't, in the event side of things, we haven't lost money in the events.
Okay.
Can you back up to the last slide?
I think I can. There it is, yes, sir.
So the net revenue number is a positive number of income versus expenses?
That's, that is, that is after expenses and everything. So typically, so Jeff Dunham, our gross would have been whatever it was and I couldn't tell you, I probably should add that in, but there's a gross and then, but the net revenue is once all the expenses are out.
Just to clarify, these are for the individual events?
I understand that.
Not the overall, I think?
That's correct.
I was just looking at the events to see what was making money and...
Yeah, all of these events made money for us.
Credit card expenses, everything's been taken out of this?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's correct.
And the economic impact, that's all the money that was spent in Enid at that time?
That's correct.
During these venues?
And you're just using a multiplier there, I assume?
We were using the calculator that Rob brings to us. So just one of the quotes we got from Universal, one of their party, we had one of the best service and food events at Stride to date for our company party. So wanted to kind of trumpet our success there. They had great words for us. So we continue, you know, we're dealing without a chef right now, so we've had some bumps. Not gonna lie, we've had some bumps with some food lately, but we're working on finding a great chef and it's tough, so if anybody knows of a chef, send them my way.
And just a quick thing, mentioning the food, I thought the stuff you guys put together for Junior Welfare League was fantastic.
Yeah, I heard the ribs were great.
You nailed that.
I would tell you, the, being a Rotarian and meeting with you every Monday, there was a time when your food was pretty low. It has, it has come up substantially in the last year.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that. Appreciate hearing that. Please pass that on, whether it's through Gerald or you guys, you know, I'm always around. Just reach out and tell me. We're struggling to find a chef and if, like I say, if anybody knows one, I've got a great kitchen for them to work in. So I'm gonna let Rob talk just for a minute on his stuff.
Jeff, have you, have you talked to, out there at Autry?
I did, yeah.
And they don't have...
The challenge, the challenge with that is they...
Don't have any of the experience.
Experience. I'm looking for a food and beverage director and executive chef that can run the kitchen and has all that experience and they're, I would love to hire one of those folks as, as help, so to speak, but I need a, I need a sharp chef.
Why did our last chef left? Leave? Why did he?
Ian, he just had some medical issues and then I think his mom wasn't doing too well, so he found it time to leave, so.
Good evening. Jeff asked me to put together some economic impact numbers of some of the things that are scheduled for twenty twenty-five. And so what I have produced here and what is on this slide are the top, the top ones are new events that are coming to Enid in twenty twenty-five. Now, C L D leadership class technically isn't, we get that pretty much every year, but the rest of these are new events that have not been on the books in several years. And we ran the, the number of people and the estimated economic impact and the estimated local taxes. Couple I want to highlight are the Chisholm Trail Select Sale and Futurity. That is the end of June at the Expo Center. And they actually reached out to us and inquired about it and we worked with them and were able to make sure that was going to come. We did have an issue because that is still during the Coke turnaround. And so we have, I've had a meeting with the Coke folks that are running the turnaround, excuse me, and we're just in communication with each other to make sure that they don't take a bunch of hotel rooms away from us during the World Series. And then late June, they're gonna go into early July is what they've told us. And so we just wanted to make sure we would have enough hotel rooms available to host this conference and not be in the way of what the Coke folks will be needing at that time. And so checked with them, they're good with it, so we were able to land that conference. The Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group was actually here for another conference. They were a vendor and they liked what they saw and so they reached out and we were able to work to get them here in October. And then the Arts, the Oklahoma Arts Conference, they put out an R F P. We submitted our bid and they accepted our bid, so they hadn't been here since twenty seventeen. So they will be here in October, bringing close to four hundred people here for a three-day conference. The Falconry, North American Falconry Association, this is, this is brand new. They have a conference every year in either Nebraska, Kansas, Oklahoma, or Texas. And they just rotate every four years. They were in liberal Kansas here just about two weeks ago. That was, that took a little bit of doing to figure out how we could take care of their birds and just all of the different logistics. We worked with Jeff and with Nicole Zimmer to get everything lined up that they needed. Rob, quick question. I think, aren't we gonna have a space like a big field where they'll be competing? I was just getting to that, Commissioner. The field right behind Country Inn and Suites, which is going to be one of the host hotels, owned by Eli Barry. And so I reached out to Eli and said, here's what we have going on. Would this be of interest to you? And he, he says, I don't have anything planned for that parcel right now. Yes, he said, the main thing I want to do is hold a bird, so we're gonna do what we can to make that happen for him. But, yeah, so that was, they will bring everything they need, all the netting, fencing, everything. And so, because we could help with that and thanks to Eli for his generosity and letting us use that land at no cost to us, we were able to land that conference. And then, of course, you know about the Division One Women's National Soccer Tournament that's coming to Advance Soccer Complex. So you add all those numbers up and you see just under two million dollars in estimated economic impact with estimated local taxes totaling little over ninety-one thousand dollars. Now, what I didn't add, those three at the bottom are numbers from twenty twenty-four. The Skortel Tournament, the Skelter Tournament, and one O S S A A area tournament. And those are the numbers that they brought in last year. So we'll anticipate roughly the same, hopefully maybe a little more if we get a few more attendees to, to go to that. And then I didn't even include like the World Series, which will bring in just shy of one point four million dollars of economic impact for that ten-day event. So that's all the new things that we have coming as of right now. We have put a bid in to get the Oklahoma Mayor's Conference. That would be in June also. We have submitted our bid. We're still waiting to hear whether that group will be coming here or not. We got some assistance from the mayor and Mr. Gilbert and I think we got a pretty good conference plan for them, should they decide to come here. So that's all I have. I'll let Jeff take it over again.
And I love it that Rob is, you know, we're involved in a lot of that as far as most of those shows. So it's gonna be great to have those folks in the building and again, that'll be revenue in our, a revenue stream for us. So the things that we've got upcoming, you can see here, we've got the Ted Vigil Show this Friday night selling well. If anybody hasn't got, if you haven't got your tickets yet, come out, great down Denver guy. This guy is a dead ringer for John and sounds great. Got a comedy show in January and you can see all the things there that we've got coming up. Got a couple of shows that we'll announce. We've got a Yachtley Crew, which is soft, soft rock. I call it soft rock hairball, seventies and eighties. So if you're, if you're into that music, it's really gonna be a fun show. So the M M A show where it's, it's possible, it may go away. Unfortunately, they had a couple of shows over in Tulsa that didn't do too well, so they're relooking at their model to see what they can do to make it come back and be better. So hopefully we'll get that back. I know that our local promoter is changing his way of thinking too, so we, M M A may not be something we have for a little bit, which is a bummer. And also I'm still working with the, with our bull riding promoter, so we'll, we'll see that come up in March out at the Expo Center. Our staffing, as I was mentioning, we're still working on trying to direct our food and beverage and executive chefs. We've got some great support from O V G with the traveling chef and we've got our chef out of Shawnee that comes up and helps us as well. And then our food and beverage manager does a great job in picking up the slack and cooking as well. So again, if anybody knows a good chef, I'll keep asking. So here's, here's the numbers as we stand right now through October. And you'll see the minus fifty-six, that is above, if that's the way you want to put it, above the subsidy number right now. Part of that is due to, we, when we put our budget together, we have to look at, you know, we say we're gonna forecast for X number of shows a year. That helps us get to that seven hundred and fifty, seven hundred and forty-eight thousand number. So part of that number is a major concert that we, that didn't materialize and that we didn't get. So that's why you see that there. Our overhead, we're, we're on par. We're not overspending, our expenses are in great order. It's just, you know, we're missing eleven events that have just either didn't come to us or, you know, we just didn't find the show to be there. So that's why you see that number. We're gonna continue to, we've got a new district general manager that has taken the place of Rick Hons and Claudio, he's down in Beaumont, Texas. Real sharp, real hardworking and is feeding me information on promoters and, and buyers and things for shows every day. So that's where the motorcycle show that we'll hopefully have in, in February is the M M A and a couple of other things that we're looking at is coming from. So he's, he's feeding me information. We've got a great group of buildings as part of the region that we, we meet weekly and really try to find and help each other find shows and bring shows through our buildings on a, on a rack. So hoping to improve that number, I believe when we get November's numbers and we get December's numbers done, we'll see that number improve. We've had a great holiday party season and so we'll see that number improve and we'll continue to work on that. So are there any questions?
Let's happen about any cheer competitions. I know that both of us had mentioned those.
Yes, and I worked with Justin and I don't...
About what?
Cheer competition. Cheer.
Cheer.
Yeah, I reached out to Justin and was back and forth with him several times, gave him a great deal on the building, but he chose to go out to the Expo Center for whatever reason. I, you know, they want to sell their own tickets and that's something we are not supposed to do. We're supposed to sell through our system. That helps us make money, obviously. You know, so there were some things, you know, I hated the way it went down. So if you, you know, I want to get him back. I want to talk to him some more and find that. So we're working on it, trying to find more. City Cheer was in the building for a banquet just recently and they're gonna use the building to practice. So we're, we're gonna work with them and cut them a great deal to be in the building and then hopefully get some competitions. Trying to get aggressive as I can, but still be profitable and make money because we want to keep folks coming, so, yeah.
Thank you.
So go back to my original question. What events did we not make money on?
None.
None?
We made money on everything.
We just didn't have enough events?
Not even, not enough events, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're making money on our banquets, we're making money on the things that we've had so far. We just didn't have enough.
And then the other thing that I have some concerns about, we agreed when we redid our deal that y'all were gonna have our reports in a timely way.
Right, yes, sir.
And it's my understanding that we just got August, September, and October two weeks ago.
Correct.
Which is not what we agreed on.
Agreed.
Are we going to have November this Friday?
No, sir.
See, Jeff?
I understand.
That's a problem for me.
I agree.
And I'll tell you why it's a problem. I feel like we're in partners on this thing and I have to explain why we're spending what looks like, if you take the fifty-six thousand that we're behind right now, times three, because that's over four months, it's almost a hundred and seventy thousand above what we've already budgeted, right?
Understood, yes.
I have to explain that. And when my partner can't get me the reports or better yet, get Aaron the reports, that's not gonna work for me anymore.
No, sir.
So tell me tonight what you're gonna do to rectify that.
We are gonna work harder, we're gonna hire?
No, not work harder. I mean, I think they're already working hard.
That's all I can say. I mean, all I can do is tell my finance director that she has to get it done. I mean, and that's her working harder to get it done. She, she was in the office non-stop to get where we were at. I mean, we still have challenges with our system and I'm sorry to use that excuse, but that is a problem for us. We've got a new system that O V G is rolling out, but not coming until March. So that's not helping us a lot. Terrible excuse, terrible reason, I admit that.
And O V G's system's really not my problem.
No, sir, you're exactly right. You're exactly right.
I'm just saying, we redid your contract
Yes, sir.
based on some stipulations and I feel like you haven't completely stepped up.
We're failing right at this moment, I agree.
And I promise you, one more time, I will not be... I'm gonna have to relook at a lot of things if we cannot get reports when we need them.
Well, we need to get them when you need them, I agree.
Yes.
I agree.
Per the contract.
Twentieth of the following month.
Yes.
Yep, I agree with you.
Okay, 'cause I guarantee you, we get to the end of this year and we have to come with another hundred and sixty-eight? Not gonna go well for us.
I'm not, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna keep working as hard as we can. That's all I can promise you, you know.
I understand that and you understand, I want this.
I do, no, no, we're, we're...
I want to someday sit up here and go, man, good job, good job.
I would love to hear that.
Right now, I'm not seeing that.
I agree, I, yeah.
You know, and I know everybody works hard, so does our team.
Yeah.
But we've got to have those reports.
Yes, sir.
Period.
I will, I will press the buttons.
If we, if one person can't get it done, you might have to go find another one.
Yes, sir.
So...
Fair enough.
Okay.
I, I take the burden, I take it.
Okay, well, I just, all right, any other comments, concerns?
Please, I'm, I'm here, so now's the time.
Okay.
One quick question, so the inability to get some of the bigger concerts, what's the stumbling block there? Just too much competition?
It is competition and, you know, and I've preached this before, it comes down to people have to buy tickets. You know, I mean, we canceled a show, we canceled the I Love the Nineties show because people weren't buying tickets.
We also are changing direction and going more for conferences and sporting events.
Right, and I'm gonna be honest with you, that's why we went up another two hundred thousand dollars. That is not going to fill the bucket, folks. We have to have concerts. And I, and I know that's a hard, hard pill to swallow and it's a risky pill to swallow. But as you see, I mean, it brings in money, but it's not big money. Jeff Dunham brought in twenty-seven thousand dollars. You know, cheer competi, cheer competitions, basketball games, that is, you know, five, six, seven, eight thousand dollars if we're lucky.
Well, like the, what was the one concert? Well, like the, what was the one concert that was the soft rock that's coming up?
Yachtley Crew.
What's the guarantee on that, or how's that set up? We know that there's three different ways you can set that.
It's, it's a, we actually bought this show. The guarantee is $25,000.
Okay.
And then with, with the expenses, we're looking at, it's 50 to 65,000 to bring the show to town.
So, Commissioner, so you know to answer your question, we, we renegotiated contract here less than a year ago.
Yeah, that's correct.
Just under a year ago. Problem was, we were taking on some concerts that was $125,000 guarantee. If we sold one ticket, we still owed 125. At the end of the day, I mean, we were selling 1,200 tickets, coming to the table with 60K out of pocket, which was not going to work anymore. So, just because we bring in a big name does not mean people fill the audit.
That's right, that's right.
I've seen that.
And so, there's other ways that we can do these concerts, not, not as lucrative to us.
Right.
But we kind of felt like it was time to, the, the amount of reward versus the amount of risk just did not seem like it paid off. Actually, Commissioner Sarah Guis was in that. Commissioner Norwood was in that also. So, what we asked was to go back and relook at some of this, and if we do concerts, don't do any more $125,000 guarantees. You know, I mean, that works once in a great while, but boy, you take it in shorts multiple times. And how did the, what were, do you know your numbers on the wrestling tournament this week?
We're going to make in the neighborhood of $8,500.
Okay.
That's net. That is actually in the pocket.
Yeah. And so, that's one of those. We don't make a lot of money, but it's not a huge risk.
We're not losing money.
And we don't go backwards on it. So.
Yeah, and it's, I love those events, and those are going to be great for us. It just, it doesn't fill the pot where we needed to fill the pot to. I agree, we're not, we, we compete with the casinos. We compete with Oklahoma City and Tulsa. You know, people, I think people save their money to go see Zach Bryan or whoever's playing Justin Timberlake in Tulsa or in the city, or even Wichita for that matter. And, you know, instead of staying here and seeing a great show. So, it's, it's tough. It's hard, and I, I respect your, your frustration, and it's something I lose, I mean, literally lose sleep over, and I don't know what to, it's, it's tough, so.
I just don't like getting reports.
No.
Four months after the fact.
No, I agree.
It makes it real hard for us to make good business decisions.
We can't be reactive to what's going on.
No, and I feel like that's what we are, crisis management.
Yeah.
And I refuse to do that moving forward.
I'm with you. We'll improve. I'm going to keep pressing for you.
How many weekends do you think that the building sits empty with nothing going on?
Very few. There's always something, and we're, we're working on it. You know, we, we did lose the OSSAA Wrestling to a Broken Arrow Building, brand new building over there. They want to be able to have eight mats on the floor and have 3,000 people in the building and so on. So, that, we turned around and we filled the Friday night with, with a motorcycle extreme show that would be in the building. It's a circus of type show, so. Anytime we lose something like that, I try real hard to find something that, well, I don't want to sit dark. It doesn't, it doesn't profit us any, so.
Was the motorcycle show, is that a guarantee? What, what was that?
It's a rental.
Okay.
So, the, it'll, it'll make us money.
I understand.
Yeah.
I understand, okay.
I have one more comment.
Yes, ma'am.
And this may be like, not a big deal, but when, when I've been there before for events, it is freezing in there at times, and I just can't imagine the electrical bill for something like that. Have you considered setting the temperature a little differently?
We, we have now, the city has invested a lot of money in our controllers and, in the, the system. We are now able to do better at that.
Okay.
So, we are able to have better control over the heat and, heat and air, so, yeah. Yes, ma'am.
Comments, concerns, anything? Jeff, I appreciate you working.
No, I, I appreciate you, Mr. Mayor.
I want you to take away the, or don't. I'm just, we got to have our stuff, like we all agreed on.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
No, I appreciate you, and I appreciate you guys hearing us, and thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Yeah.
All right. 3.2 update from engineering on capital improvements. Jason.
Mayor, commissioners, I hope everybody has a good evening tonight. Start the Jason Show, all 90 slides of it, but we'll hesitate to get right into it. This is an update on what our capital improvement projects that we're working on, basically what, what the engineering department has been doing over the last year and a half, basically. Just as a reminder, capital improvement projects are improvements to real properties and major maintenance projects. In 2020, in the fiscal year '24, we had a total of 51 projects that we, we started in that, that year for, for a budgeted total of 16 million and some change. In '25, we set up 11 design-only projects, which is something I'll, I'll touch on a little bit later. And then we had 42 budgeted projects and the 11 million, basically 11 and a half million budgeted for that year, or for this year, I guess. And then also, I'm going to talk about 15 projects that we have an estimated 24 million that is either some form of grant, some form of loan, something of that nature that they're set up in that manner. Diving right into the 24 projects, I'm going to go over just a few, just a handful of the projects that either kind of lingered into this year and didn't get completed or that they've, they've wrapped up. First project is, is Meadow Lake, Meadow Lake Park North Restrooms. It's going to be a new set of restrooms located there. If you can see, this is, this is the softball field. It's just south of there. Here are the, the Kiwanis rides and things of that nature. So, it's over here. It's going to include, I think it's two, two stalls, completely ADA compliant for this part of the park so that those ADA needs are met. Design's 100% done and it's underway. Somewhere in the ballpark, about 25% complete. One other project that just, just recently wrapped up is Willow Road Stormwater Lift Station upgrades. This included several upgrades to the actual lift station, and, and one of the, kind of the, the faces of it, I guess, is the noticeable ones that, that is easy to see was the, was the, the lining and the cleaning out of this channel that's alongside Willow there. It held a lot of water. It doesn't have that good of slopes, so, so adding the concrete to it will help keep the water out of it, moving it right along. Design on, on the entire project is 100%. Construction's 100%. We are still waiting on a control panel for the lift station, which is supposed to be in here fairly soon. Another lift station project, this is actually for the sanitary sewer lift stations. We're going through and adding on backup power to each of the, to several of the locations. I think it's a total of one, two, three, four, five, six of them. This picture here is actually at the Union Equity property. It's what we call the Union Equity. It's actually no man's land now. So, basically, this will allow these sanitary lift stations to run in the events of power outages. The, the generators are ran off of, of natural gas. So, we've got all the sites done except for one, so that's why we're at 80%. Over at Fire Station 1, we're doing some bathroom improvements. It's completely designed, and the construction's about 95%. I think they're just, we're just waiting on a few touch-up things, aren't we? I think it's.
We're at 100% now.
Oh, we're done now? Awesome, okay. Well, there we go. So, we're at 100% now on that one, so good. Convention Hall Roof Repair. This one has kind of been a thorn in my side, but, but we're getting there on it. We had some repairs scheduled. We have a contractor lined up and ready to go. He was going to start back, I think, some, since fall or the spring. We had all the storms, the hailstorms and everything, and so he, he got delayed out. So, we're working with him to get him there, to get that project completed. We anticipated through conversations with him that he should be, have that going in January.
Is it currently leaking into the building from the roof?
In some places, yes. They're not major. There's some small ones.
Okay.
We've made some, some temporary, temporary repairs to things to prevent actual leaks, but there's.
Damage.
Yeah. As part of that, same, same, same money, we actually made some repairs to the, to the awning that is on the north side of the, of the Stride Bank Center. That's kind of one of those unnoticed projects, but there was a big hole, hole in that awning that was causing a fairly big leak running down there. So, that project designed and completely completed here just recently. Out at the, the sewer plant, the WRF, we, they needed new air conditioning systems, both in the lab and as well as some of the offices and break rooms. This project took care of that. That project was completed, I think in October sometime, and it was on the agenda in November. So, Commissioner Patterson, to your, to your, to your point, and Jeff wrote up just a little bit, this is a project that, that's in, in progress right now, and it's actually the control systems for both of those buildings, and this is what's going to help them maintain and, and keep good temperatures within both of those buildings. I think it's probably a little more than 50% done. I think they're, they're completely done with the convention hall, and they're working in the, in the event center. So, I'm, I expect it to be done here probably in the next two months or so. It's a big undertaking when you think about how large the buildings are, and when you think about all these little thermostats that are everywhere that help maintain and control it, and it's actually integrating all that together into a computer system that can be monitored and controlled from a central location. So, it's in the works and, and should be, hopefully be seeing results very soon. This project wrapped up about two weeks ago, and it was the re-roofing of, of several of our pump stations out at Cleo Springs, Ringwood, and here in town at Plant Number 2. This was just basic, simple kind of maintenance work of re-roofing the buildings to keep that equipment and stuff, everything inside of those clean and running property, properly. All right, stepping into the 25 projects, this is what we approved in last July. There are the, the breakdown of the numbers for you there. I was going to, I mentioned briefly earlier, and you'll, and you'll see this noted on, on 11 of the projects. So, so it's morally not intention to kind of set the stage or, or set up, set ourselves up for, for success in the, in the upcoming years. And so, that's why we wanted to include these as quote-unquote CIP projects as design-only. So, these projects will be completed before the end of this, this fiscal year, and they'll be ready and set up for the next, for, available for the next upcoming budgeted year. So, when we see the budget for next year, we'll, we'll probably put a star or something like that on them so that you all can, can see, hey, this project's designed, ready to go, and that will help with the decisions on what projects to move forward on. As I mentioned earlier, about 11 and a half million dollars worth of work, construction dollars for 42 projects. First project that I'll briefly touch on is a design project for the fire station. This is going to include some upgrades to both the, both to the, to the building as well as the parking lot expansions that are needed. They're, they're kind of, they're kind of tied over there on parking, so anything they need. We've hired an architect to, to work on this project for us, and it's currently in early stages of design. So, this is a street repair, crusher run, crack seal and asphalt money projects. Basically, this is what the Public Works Department, anytime you see them out there putting asphalt down, putting gravel down or anything like that, that's where this money's coming out of. So, they purchase the materials and then they do the, do the work themselves. So, we had a million dollars worth on the Street Point Repair Program, and this is a program that we introduced a few years ago. And basically, it's kind of like a spot repair type pro, program, project, excuse me, that kind of goes around, and whenever there's bad single spots located on roads, this gives us, we have a contract set up already with a contractor that basically, when we see those, like, we actually have a list, a fairly long list, but when there's, when those situations arise, we can basically instruct the contractor to go out and make that repair. These are typically probably, you know, 12 by 12, 20 by 20, kind of a smaller patch-type type program.
That's a great project right there.
I like it a lot.
A great project.
It gives us the opportunity to, to hit the nail on the head in, in it, so. So, as part of that, it doesn't always, it doesn't always equal up to a million dollars, so we get, we get a little bit of leftover change on it that we kind of get to, we focus that leftover money on kind of the larger point repair projects, so the bigger ones. Like, one of the three that we have that we completed this year was the Meadow Lake Drive Interest. I don't know if you guys noticed that during, during the last couple of weeks, but it, it was a very needed and very well repaired, repaired thing, so kudos to them. Our sidewalk partner, partnership program, this is both for residential and commercial properties. This is the, the program in which a, a business owner or property owner can reach out to us, and we partner, partnership together to make repairs to the sidewalks. There's some, some rules and regs that they got to meet. Sidewalk got to be existing, things of that nature. And so, we partnership with them. We split the costs with them. I'm really proud of this one. This is one of my favorite, like, I love the way this one turned out. It's such a, it's my, one of my favorite before and after photos that I've had doing this project, but it's at the restaurant, former Limone, Cassinia. It used to be where Octavio's was, but it really kind of awesome before and after effect on it. That project's all the way done. I've got a couple more that are in the books that are kind of waiting to get that signed off by the property owner to take care of those. But, so we got a few more of those that are out there. And if any citizens or business owners want to, want to apply, please apply. We, we never run out of that money. I wish we would, but we don't want to ever run out of that money. So, the next big project that I'd like to talk about is, is the Prairie View Trail. This is a trail that's going to run from Oakwood and Willow over to the Prairie View School. Right now, the design is 100%. As of this evening, you guys are going to make us to 100% on right-of-way acquisition, I hope. So, looking to bid it, that's actually a typo. It should be winter 2025. We'll be bidding that here in December or January, maybe February. I hope it doesn't go that long, but it should be in January. And then construction will be in the summertime of 2025. Our goal for this project is to basically have any kind of construction that would impact traffic done over this coming summer, so we don't have to impact traffic for the students and the, and the parents and stuff out there at the school. And this was a project that's, we were, it's through the TAP program with ODOT, so I think it's an 80/20 or something like that split, so.
Jason, that project, we submitted two different projects, right? And we only got one. And because we were design-ready, they called back and said someone didn't use all their money? Is that, am I getting that close to right?
I think that's right, yes.
Yeah, that's what we're going with anyway.
Yeah, I apologize. Sometimes, sometimes, sometimes the good stories all blend together, and I don't.
Yeah. The point is, because we had that ready to go. The point is, because we had that ready to go on the drawing board, we were able to capture that money.
Yes, sir.
And specifically, that was the Trail to Vance, I think.
Okay, yes, yes.
We've had design for a while, which goes with your comment about designing stuff and knowing when the money comes in. So yes, I believe they called Stephen and said, hey, he'd applied for two, was told he, maybe we only got one, but they called back because somebody didn't use their money or they had extra money, and so we want them to call Enid, so they have money to spend.
That's right. The next group of projects are going to be the property improvement projects, traffic signals, traffic cabinets, and landfill stuff. This year, we had a replacing traffic signal improvement project. I'm sorry, I'm getting caught up in my mind here. These include the signal cabinets and battery backups and the emergency preemption type things. The materials on these are ordered, and Michael Williams with the tech services is working through these projects. I didn't get exact what's what's done, but he told me that he's in the progress of working on all of these projects and those items. Sorry about that. So they're underway and working through those. Another project that, of Michael Williams, is rewiring a couple of intersections here, Westmore and South Van Buren and O&amp;K and Leona Mitchell, and those are kind of just what they seem, replacing the wiring and conduit so that they don't have the issues of them running out and running problems. So contracts have been set up, and the construction on those is pending whenever the contractor is available. Landfill permitting project, so this is an ongoing multi-year project. It takes several years for us to get this set up. But basically, this is permitting to where we can be able to use the property on the south side of the existing landfill to expand our area of the landfill. Right now, the hydro geological study has completed, and the final report, Phase One design, is in progress. And so we'll be working with the firm that's doing the design on that probably for another year or two or three probably till we get that wrapped up and permitted completely. Property repairs and replacement. This year's ADA transition project is going to be the, we're going to add a, it'll be a multi-year project, but basically, the goal is for us to get a trail from Oakwood and Randolph all the way down to the Oakwood Trailhead, which is south of about a half mile of 412. Survey on that project is in progress. It's about 75% surveyed. Conceptual plan, we know where we're going, we know where we're going to run through, is complete. And so we've had a pre-design meeting, and the preliminary design of the project is underway. That will probably be a kind of early spring is kind of what I'm anticipating, is having the design of that done and getting that out to bid as soon as we can after that. So another convention hall weatherproofing project. This one is actually where we're going to kind of redress and re-coat the outside brick of the building to help prevent some of the moisture intrusion and stuff like that, some of the heat loss and things of that nature through the brick. The construction is complete. Right now, we're just waiting on some thermal imagery that we're going to get done on the building. Basically, we're going to use a thermal imaging camera to look at the building and see where we have any leaks, any large leaks, to help us kind of narrow down what some of the issues are with controlling the temperature within the building. Parks projects for this year, they included the Champion Gym Roof Repair. That project has been completed. The Champlin Pool House Roof Repair, that had some leaks that were on the building, and so we got that project wrapped up and completed as well. And then right now, we're, oh, sorry, wrong project. So over at Ambux Park, they're going to resurface that playground with a new seamless-type padding floor on it. It's out for quote, and we're waiting to see what the numbers look like. And then this is where I thought I was going to, the grouting of the Champlin Pool. So basically, fixing any leaks that the pool might have or may have that we don't know about, but basically, reseal it and grout any of the large cracks. The construction on that will be in spring prior to the pool opening. Street improvements, these are my arterial street projects. The first project is Root. So my initial plan on this project was to basically resurface, contract and resurface this whole project, doing some studying and some research. I think we're going to be more cost-effective if I have city crews do it. So about a month or two ago, you all approved the purchase of about, I think it was about $250,000 worth of asphalt, and this is where it's going to go. I've got a few spots that I want to repair the actual pavement and subgrade ahead of them laying that asphalt down. So once I get that kind of set up and done, I'm waiting on the quotes for that project. I'll give Ashley and her public works, her crews, they'll go ahead and get out there and get that done as soon as they can. So this is, I set aside $100,000, or we set aside $100,000 for a crack seal program, and basically, what this project will do is go through these two streets here, which is Willow Road, Cleveland to Oakwood, and Root Garland to Oakwood Road. So this is, Root Project is on the other mile over. Basically, they go through these and seal any of the large cracks that, you know, would be causing any water intrusion into the subgrade, causing damage, kind of getting to the worser condition that is the other side of Root. So the design of that is complete. I've got a contractor lined up through a co-op, a state co-op, and construction is going to be expected sometime in spring, once the temperatures get up a little bit, so get that project underway. 66th Street Improvement, so this is the project that's out there between Willow Road and Breckenridge Road. We've gotten about the first half, well, we've got the first half basically completed, got a few cleanup and touch-up things to do on that, and so they're starting on the second phase of the project. They've been running pretty constant here lately with pours, and they're probably a little further along than 15%, but they're working their way north towards some existing pavement that's up there near Breckenridge. That is going to be, that's going to be a heavy-duty road, it's going to be industrial access type of road, so it's a lot of concrete going in there for that, so. Here's one of the design-only projects that I mentioned earlier. This is a Randolph Millan Overlay from 16th to 25th Street. And so right now, we've got, basically, we've got the design completed for the roadway, and we're nearly complete on the utility relocation of that project. So this will be one of the projects I mentioned earlier that will have a design by the end of this fiscal year, and it'll be set on the shelf, ready to go whenever the funds are available. Another design-only project is the 54th Street Reconstruction, US 412 to Chestnut Avenue. I'm actually, we're a little further along than pre-design on this project. I took a look at it here over the last week, and I think we probably need to do something right now and not really design the whole thing, so I probably should have updated that status. But to let you know that, you're probably going to start seeing a little bit of construction out there, making a few spot repairs to that street out there, and then we'll work on a design redesign of the whole thing upcoming, so.
When you repair that, or when you replace that road eventually, is that going to be a heavy road like 66?
Yes, sir.
Okay. A lot of heavy traffic comes down there.
Yeah, I initially think that's what the problem is with that road, is it wasn't built thick enough, and I think we're, it's not handling the traffic as it should, so.
Why do people take that road to get around the railroad tracks?
Yes, yes, we do. So local street program, it mostly includes a design-only project with several small, you know, I won't say small, but local street-type projects, and then we had the remaining funds for 10th Street. So 10th Street, this year, we finished off the contract with this year's money. Right now, they're working on the last, I think, two blocks or block and a half roughly. This project included the reconstruction of the street as well as the addition of new sidewalks and all-new approach ramps and driveways along all those houses there. So this project seemingly has been going on forever, but it's, but it's a very nice road, and it looks real nice, and we're about there until the citizens that, but I expect it to be done probably in January or February completely, so.
The water line, oh yeah, you mentioned the water line was moved there, so it's been a lot of work. It'll be nice for a long time.
Yes, sir.
So when do you think it'll be done?
I think sometime in January is when I anticipate. Bar, you know, we're kind of in the season of weather, you know, if the weather turns on us, it'll, it could drag it out a little longer than that, but I think sometime in January.
One of the things about keeping that road shut down so long, I got to see a lot of neighborhoods I've never been in.
That's good. So one of the other design-only projects is Wagon Trail, and it basically is from Willow Road all the way up over to Cleveland. This is an asphalt road that's got some drainage issues and some areas that are not really doing that well right now. And so that's what this project is going to do, is resurface and re-grade a lot of that, a lot of the troublesome areas and get that flowing a little better, and so that it'll last longer. Another design-only project is North A Street between Broadway and Randolph. This is a block, a project that, pretty rough, just needs reconstructed, new sidewalks and things like that. Design of it's about 85% complete. Harrison Street from Main to Broadway, another block street, block project. It's in design, it's going to be a design-only. Survey is complete, and it's about 25% complete on the design side. And then South Jefferson from Indiana to Illinois. The survey is complete, and once the design on Main, I'm sorry, Harrison, excuse me, Harrison is complete, they'll kick off and get into that design of that project as well. And then the last design-only project is a larger project, kind of in the realm of what the 10th Street project is, but it's North 12th between Chestnut Avenue to Peach Avenue. The survey is currently in progress, and so we're still kind of in the early stages of design of what we're going to look at to do on that project. But it'll be a full-depth reconstruction-type project as like what 10th Street is, water line, sidewalks, and new street. So Sanitary Sewer Capital Program.
Before you go there and leave this, you went through the, obviously, the trail program didn't get a lot of emphasis in this past. You did mention one, but you didn't have on the slide, at least I couldn't remember where it started. I never figured out where it was.
The Prairie View Trail?
Is that what you called, the one that you hit early on in the slide?
Oh, I'm sorry, the Oakwood Trail as part of the ADA. Yeah, so it's basically, it runs from the Oakwood Trailhead, which is about a half a mile south of 412, and then it runs all the way up Oakwood to Randolph, the intersection of Randolph and 412.
Okay.
So basically, it's, trying to think of the Commons area, trying to think what's on the south side of the mall.
I got it now. I just, when you went through it, I couldn't visualize where you were talking about.
Which side of the road is that on? Will it be, don't know yet? Sorry, shouldn't ask that question.
The best side.
Yeah, the best one.
The most cost-effective. I'm looking at the east side on the north half, and then probably transitioning over to the west side somewhere around the 412 area. It gets a little tricky, it gets a little tight in the right-of-way down in that area, so I'm working through it, but I'm pretty sure, I'm 80% sure it's going to be on the east side, on the north, kind of in the Commons, Dollar General, and then there's that empty lot there, so.
Good.
So the Sanitary Sewer I&amp;I Program, Inflow and Infiltration, this is, so the kind of the sister that created the Concrete Point Repair Program. This program is where we go around, and whenever there's any kind of issues with the sewer, we make point repairs or spot repairs to those issues. This helps really kind of, you know, set our system up to where we don't have very many backups and things of that nature. This project is usually always, it reflects the previous year's video inspection program where we go around and we video inspection find, and we look for issues in the sanitary sewer system. This project's been awarded, and construction is ongoing and in progress as we speak. Root Control Program, this is a yearly program that we always do, about $150,000, and usually, what it includes is, we've got the town broken up into, I want to say it's 13, I think, areas, and basically, we just rotate through those areas every single year, and this program goes in and treats the sewer system to prevent roots from growing inside of the system. So Backup Power, so I mentioned this project earlier, the last year's project, so this is this year's project for backup power. We've got three sites located, or planned out for the haze, scooters and out at the airport to install backup generators to those lift stations, so. The Hammond Phillips Sanitary Sewer Lift Station Rehab, this project will be, basically, we redo the pumps, redo any kind of the railings that have been damaged or wore out, and it's in design right now. Usually, it won't take us very long, it takes about a month to get that designed out and get that out to bid here pretty soon. Airport and Lift Station Control Panel, that's what it is, is the control panel out at the airport for the lift station. Design of that's in progress, and what the control panel does is help control and maintain the flows so that it doesn't burn up the motors and things of that nature to those lift stations that run fairly often. 3409 South Van Buren, this is a location that we've had, we've had many issues of backups and problems along this area right here. This is the BNSF, I'm sorry, the U, no, this is BNSF, rail line down here that's south of town, Vance, it would be off over here. So there's a sag in this line, and basically, we're redoing this line. This project is just a little bit too large for our point repair program that we typically have, and so we separated it out as a separate project last year. Design's about 90% complete. It's being, going to be sent to DEQ as well, and it's currently with BNSF for the permitting process. This is another control panel project for the scooters lift station. Design on that one is in progress as well. So some of our, some of our big projects that we're working on in the sewer system right now is the sewer plant, the WRF Headworks upgrade. And so basically, the way to think about this project is all of the sanitary sewer that goes to the sewer plant comes to this facility right in this area. And basically, we're having issues with the system, we call them rags is what they're called, but it's actual, some fibrous materials that get the system plugged up, burns up the motors and does things of that nature. And so what this project is doing is looking at is upgrading, basically, the front end of our plant to prevent that from happening, and so, which will increase the lifespan of everything behind it. So right now, we're in the scope and fee negotiations with a firm, a design firm, should get that design fully kicked off probably in the next month or two. The other large sewer project that's underway right now is the solids handling facility out at the new plant. The existing solids facility is located at the old sewer plant, and so it's getting, it's showing its age and things of that nature, and so we are getting, we're going to redesign and reroute it to where the solids materials come to a new location. That project, we've got a conceptual plan, we've got a good cost estimate, and so we'll be working at moving towards some of the design components of that facility.
When you're complete with that, we totally have everything at the old plant gone?
I think the except the peak flow.
You're going to keep the peak flow storage base?
Right.
Okay, but all that other equipment that we had with the solids? Okay, but all that other equipment that we had with the solids, that'll all be?
In the new site.
In this one, okay.
We'll be left with all the old infrastructure that we'll probably ask for money to demolish.
But it won't be in use, it's just there.
Right, that will be out of use, and we talked about, some demo has started, but it's very small in comparison. It will probably be, I'm guessing it'll be a million plus to demo that old plant, so. There, I'm throwing out a number for you, Marley.
And then, the final project out of the sewer plant that we're working on right now currently is cleaning some of the headworks tubes where the sewer comes into the front part of the plant. This is just kind of a larger maintenance project that we need to get taken care of this year, ahead of the new facility, once it's, obviously, it's a few years down the road. All right, Stormwater Fund. Can't see, what slide am I on, Gerald?
Flood Control.
58.
58, okay.
Well, that's 57.
That's 57, okay.
How many slides do you have? Is it 100?
91.
Oh, my. I'll give you the hand signal.
Okay, I'll be watching over it. Marley and I, you know, we don't, we want to give you all the information we got. So, all right, moving into Stormwater. First project is the Live Oaks. This has been kind of a multi-stage project, moving along the Live Oaks Channel, which is, oh shoot, I didn't put it down on here, it's between Johnson and the Bird Sanctuary between Live Oaks. Is it Johnson? Is that the other street? Okay.
Yes, Johnson.
Is it Johnson? Okay, so, it's in that area, it's a channel, obviously, as you can see from my, that's the before picture there on the left, it basically always held water. Here's a new construction photo, they just basically finished it up, they're cleaning some stuff out here that they needed to get cleaned out. I didn't have a picture of it after that got cleaned out. So, we're about 95% complete on this phase, which will get us through the Bird Sanctuary, get that graded and flowing properly. I'm going to go ahead and extend, the project will eventually extend on to the north up to 412 as well to keep that good and flowing there. The Waller Detention, so, this is that tore-up area that's south of the Dollar Tree that I get asked about about once a month, but it's an open area of some property that we purchased. So, this project will help with some of the stormwater issues that we have that are off to the south and west. It's located there, just south of Chestnut Avenue in Cleveland. I've got the project design, and I actually put it out to bid, and then the contractor that's doing the Cleveland widening project came to me and said, hey, I need some dirt. And I said, I've got some dirt for you. And so, I pulled the bids off, and I pointed him to this area, and so, he's going to start the construction of this project for me. So, it'll be a nice, nice, nice little trade, he gets the dirt, and I get a little bit of the holdup. So, I really can't tell you a percentage of where he's at, but he's working on it right now, so.
Speaking of that, how long are we going to be down on Cleveland? Are you going to keep traffic moving through there?
So, I'm going to talk about that just a little bit later, but.
Okay, I can wait.
Okay.
That's where we are, so.
Right, yeah, it's coming. It's in the grant, the grant slash loan type projects, it wasn't a CIP project, but I'll talk about that here, coming. So, establishment of flow lines and proper drainage, this is funds that we've had set aside to address any issues that we have in the stormwater system throughout the year. I've got one project completed, and I've got another project in progress for some repairs of the flow line. One of those projects is over at Chisholm Creek, there's a drainage pipe that was broken and had some area, caused some issues in that area. And then, the project that I've got in progress right now in design is actually located over on Park, between Park and 412, kind of in the 19th, 20th street location, kind of over there in that area, that project I've got surveyed and working on the design of that Eisenhower Drive Drainage Improvements, this is a channel that's located kind of off Basically, what this project is going to consist of is me making some repairs to the channel, adding some stability and things to the concrete block wall so that it stops moving, gets things going properly. The design's complete, probably going to release it sometime in January for bid, so. 16th and Willow Road Drainage Improvements, so this project's going to fix some of the drainage issues that are located along Willow, kind of the PT coupling area over there. It's always had just some poor drainage, and so, this project's going to address those issues. I've got about 75% of it designed, and so, I plan on it being released for construction sometime in spring of 2025. Cleveland Street, Indian Drive to the Core Channel Drainage Improvements, so this project is actually going to address some of the piping issues that we have over here. To familiarize with the area, this would be Colton's, Jiffy Chip would be up here just to the north, and so, it's the piping that runs along Cleveland right there between that property and then down to the Willow Channel. We've gotten good piping from the north to the south right here, it just gets, it's a little undersized from the rest of the way. So, this project's going to address that. Design's 100% complete, I've got some utility poles that are in the way that I've got to get relocated, so I'm working with OGN to get that done. Once utilities are relocated, I'll put that project out to bid. Lincoln Street, Oak Avenue to Chestnut Avenue Drainage Improvements, this is the second phase. So, to get your bearings about on this project, this would be, so this is Cleveland right here, this is Pope Industries up here to the north, I think there's a dog groomer in here, and then there's the Marble.
Enid Tye Marble.
Enid Tye Marble, thank you, is located there. And so, Phase 1 of the project actually is about 90% complete, if not a little more. Basically, it's improving the channel from here to here. This project will be looking at the drainage along the railroad back down over to Lincoln. We've got an idea of what we wanted to do, first things first, so we wanted to talk to BNSF and see what they're going to allow us to do along their right-of-way, because it is their right-of-way. So, we've been working with the permitting, they basically told us to go for it, but you need a permit. So, basically, we're working on that. That permitting is in progress right now as we speak. So, out at the airport about, oh, it's been a while now, but Keston came to me, and he had some drainage issues, and so, we put together a project and put it on the budget. And so, that project, I think there's about six or seven locations that have some drainage issues that we're fixing. The design's 100% complete, and the contractor was actually supposed to be starting this week on that project, so he's out there getting things started. Most of the repairs include just basically kind of just regrading some of the smaller ditches, and then also, there's some inlets that have been broken, piping that's broken that's caused some sink holes, so we're addressing all of those issues. Flood Control, Boggy Creek Channel, box repairs, so this is a follow-up project. Last year, we did a LiDAR scan or survey of the piping, and then this project will be one that goes through and looks at that LiDAR data and finds spots that need to be repaired or fixed along that stretch.
Jason, I think we're going to stop right here for right now, 616, and we can come back, maybe come back another time, or we can come back later on.
I don't want to teach Jason how to tell you all about it, unless you guys want to hear the rest of it next time, that's fine, too.
Whatever you like.
If you'll just hang around, I'll bring you back up during the item on our regular agenda where we can go back. Well, I tell you what, anybody doesn't think we're not doing some things in mean it, they're not getting out enough, but, yeah, it is a lot of projects.
Yes, sir.
A lot of projects, so thank you all very much, Marley, you too. All right, very good. Well, with that being said, at 616, I'm going to adjourn our study session, and we'll pick up a regular meeting at 6:30. We are adjourned.